Okay. So, why are we here? About a year and a half ago, the mayor came to me and expressed his concern over the conditions of our roadways here in the city. At that point, he instructed me to come up with a comprehensive plan. That would not only improve our city as its current state, but provide for future improvements. What I did was I got with our city engineers, Tucker Frederson and Kevin Hell and our street superintendent is Bill Goon right away. And we started the development of a plan that you're about to see. This was a challenging and an eye opening situation. As you will see in the plan, since this administration, we've been very aggressive applying for grants. And we actually have a slide on that. Based on our study, our grants has what's been keeping our heads above water, but barely as far as our roadways go. As the availability of these grants decrease, so do our roadways and the conditions of them. Our plan was first presented to the mayor and Mr. Grau, our auditor. And they proceeded to provide input and ideas that would assist our plan. As you will see. The well thought out collaborative effort between the administration and elective officials is necessary for future growth in our community. We put a lot of work into this into this plan, you'll see in the presentation. This was a huge collaborative effort between everybody. On the third floor as well as, you know, our streets workers and of course, our auditor's office. Had a huge, huge input on this. That being said, I will turn it over to Mr. Tucker to start our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Can everybody see the presentation slides here? Okay? I think I had to restart it for whatever reason.
Yes.
Okay, good. Excellent. Thank you again. And I'd also like to thank the mayor, yourself, Paul Grau, Bill Goon, Kevin Hell. And the rest of our entire team who put a lot of time and effort into developing this presentation and program. So proud to be a part of this, you know, definitely was a team effort and. This program is paving our city's roadway infrastructure future. So literally, this is the paving program. During this presentation, I'm hopeful that we can relay the need and importance of this program. And you know, develop the support that's necessary to be able to put this program into motion. And get us, you know, get us started in the right direction here, you know, with our roadway infrastructure. Would like also this preference, you know, preface this meeting by saying that. You know, we've developed this program based on what we know today. As everybody knows, conditions change, markets change, pricing for materials change. You know, conditions, the roadways themselves are going to change over time. You know, anticipated grants, as Ken was mentioning earlier, you know, we've been heavily relying on grants last few years. But you know, we can't count on those and may or may not get those in the future. So that can change. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, you know, we've done the best we can with what we know today. But there could be some changes to the program as we go. So just want to let everybody know that upfront here. And with all that said, I'd like to just jump right into the presentation here. Just a quick synopsis of what we're going to try to cover today. And I'll apologize ahead of time, this, there's about 50 slides in this presentation. We did a trial run this the other day and it was ended up being about an hour or so. So bear with me and I apologize ahead of time, but hopefully what we have presented here will keep you interested in. You know, paying somewhat attention to what we're saying. So here's just a quick synopsis of what we're going to cover. Really important here to explain to everyone is, you know. We really want to try to take a more proactive approach to our road maintenance. You know, we've done really good with what we've had. Our resources and our funds over the last several years, you know, as far as, as far as, you know, trying to optimize our grant abilities. You know, spend what we can on our roadways. But unfortunately, you know, we're projecting that we're going to need a whole lot more work done. And on our, you know, our current resources and approach just aren't quite going to be enough. So, so this program here takes a more aggressive proactive approach to, to maintain our roadway infrastructure before it's too late. You know, we, we got a lot of roads in the city here that are really starting to degrade fast. And if we don't do something about them and plan, plan the future out, we might end up in trouble with a bunch of them. So the cost to, the cost of not keeping up with our roadway maintenance. Will cost the city significantly more down the road to achieve the same results if we're not proactive and really plan, you know, plan our future out. So we've got projections here for the roadway conditions over the next five, 10 and 15 and 20 years. And on our current path, these will continuously degrade. The poor conditions on our, on our, on our current, excuse me, on our current path. The city can't afford the letter rose gets at this point of no return. You know, so, you know, so you know, that's what all this, this program's all apart about is trying to plan the future out and figure out how we can support. This is a slide just for, this is a brief overview of what the construction of a, of a new road consists of. You got several different layers of aggregate and asphalt that typically makes that up, which is outlined here. Feel free to reference that, you know, and as we, as we move forward. In the city of Fremont. You know, we mostly have roads that are old brick roads that have been overlaid with asphalt. That's the majority of what we have throughout the city. The roads that have been currently reconstructed don't have that anymore. They're purely aggregate and asphalt section. But we do have, also have some composite roads that have concrete, asphalt, concrete, brick asphalt. So, but majority of the roads in the city of Fremont are brick overlay with asphalt. Some, some general roadway facts. So in the city of Fremont, we have about 165 centerline miles of road. And a centerline mile is how long the road is regardless of how many lanes there are. Obviously, there's, there's most every road is at least two lanes. But we've got all the roads that are three and four lanes wide, if you add in, you know, turn lanes and other things. We've got 352 lane miles of road. And to put that in perspective, that's from the city of Fremont all the way to Washington DC. So you don't really realize how many lane, lane miles of road that there is in the city, but there's quite a few. And Bill will probably say, well, that doesn't even include alleys, which I know, I know he's going, we got to take care of those too, right? Oh, so currently, the, the average age of our roadway service, now this is just a top layer. The city of Fremont is about 21 and a half years. You know, comparatively, the average design, the design life of a road is, you know, 20, 20, 25 years, longer, shorter. I mean, there's, there's various factors that go into how long a road will last, right? But generally, that's your design life. And just to give some perspective on, on how much infrastructure the city has or owns in our, in our roadways. Including bridges and storm sewers is about $120 million. So, so that obviously that's a very significant number. On what our current value of, you know, that whole system is worth now. The city has 10 bridges. They're approximately about $500,000 a piece on average. So that's about $5 million worth of bridges as well. Okay. On this slide here. You know, just really want to mention, you know, that, you know, we have been doing, you know, as far as I'm concerned, a really good job with what we've got. Here are a breakdown of our last 10 years of roadway improvement projects. You can see from 2011 to 2021. So, you know, quite a few roads, yeah, you had them out quite a few centerline miles, you know, so we're, you know, we're doing the best we can. But again, it's just not quite enough on where we need to go. One thing I want you to notice here is, you know, about the last five years or so. We've really heavily relied upon securing grants through OPWC, ODOT. CDBG and any other funding source that we can get our hands on. To really, you know, really contribute to what we can, are able to do over the last several years. So again, you know, those, those dollars are, we're, we're going to keep on trying to apply for them. But there's no guarantees that we're going to get them. And quite frankly, you know, moving forward here, we'll, we'll see, we'll see what happens. But you know, I'm thinking we really can't rely on those. So just want to bring that to your attention. Okay. So that brings us to. You know, how do we, how do we develop this, this roadway program? So, you know, to start, to start this whole process. What we needed to do was evaluate. What condition our roadways are currently in. And to do that, we used the best practice for rating roads with us been developed by ODOT. Which is, was basically called the pavement condition grading program or PCR manual. So we utilize this methodology to figure out, you know, where we at today. So, and in doing that, we had to, you know, take a look at each and every single road. You know, evaluate it, score it, and then come up with, you know, this PCR rating. You know, these ratings help us to prioritize what roads, you know, we work on as part of the program. So it gives us an idea of, you know, where we at condition wise that makes sense to either, you know, crack seal or do a mill and fill. Or do a reconstruct, which I'll get into all those methods and techniques that we plan on applying a little bit later in the presentation here. But, but this evaluation enables us to basically rate. Where, you know, where we're at and how, how we need to proceed forward with determining what needs to be done. As part of this evaluation and prioritizing process, we also looked at traffic on the various roads. So, you know, obviously the, the heavier the traffic as well as the heavier the truck traffic. You know, helped us evaluate, you know, what roads are most important. And helped us, you know, develop our strategy to determine which roads are worked on and, you know, when and what part of the program. So I just wanted to mention, you know, that start, starting to get this project, this program started. This is, this is kind of the building block of that and. We'll move forward here. So. So to give everybody an idea of what PCR means and what a, what a rating means. You know, you can almost think of it like school in a way. So, you know, you get a rating of 100 to 90, you're, you're in really good shape, right? So that's like a A and, you know, 90 to 80, that's, that's like a B or so. So, you know, it's pretty good, but yes, and so on. So, you know, this is just an example of what a 90 or a 100 looks like, which is Garrison Street. We've got done reconstructing this road a couple of years ago now already. But it looks great, new condition, completely brand new. So there's, there's 100. Here's another example of one that's degraded a little bit. This is Pine Street. Has a current PCR rating of 82. Another one here Franklin, start seeing more cracking, little rutting, some ravelling starting to happen. There's, you know, there's some, some conditions starting to degrade. So this one's rated at a 74, which isn't real bad, but starting, starting to show somewhere. Here's North Street ranking of 67. Progressively getting worse. Here's the North Front Street with a rating of 55. And here's where we don't want to go. This is Park Avenue with a PCR rating of 42. So you can see, you can see here, we're, we're starting to lose the road. It's going to be expensive to get it repaired and, you know, it's, it's deteriorating, you know, really fast. Once it gets to this point, you really degrade fast. One, one other thing I wanted to mention here at this point is. The PCR ratings are applied to the entire length of the road. So you could have sections of road that are pretty good shape still and other sections that are bad in one road. That's all averaged out for the average rating. So just, you know, just to let you know that, you know, if you see a PCR rating of 80 on a road. And there's a section of it that might be more like a 50, the average is still pretty high. So that's, that's how, that's how that applies to the overall rating of that particular road. Obviously, as much as we would like to do. All of our roads at once to get them up to par. Obviously, we can't do that. It's just not practical and it would be way too expensive. But, you know, but that's part of this whole program is to figure out and plan. You know, how we pull, pull our plan together and get it funded, right? Okay. Here is a current PCR map of the city. You'll notice here that the average PCR is a 68.8. So it's not horrible, not real good either. I mean, if you put it on a scholastic scale, you're about a C minus, right? So on average, this, this is, this is what we're at now today. You can see there's, there's a bit of red in there, which is pretty bad. You know, there are, there are some green areas in there, which are projects that we've worked on over the last several years. So, you know, so those are looking pretty good right now. Got, got quite a bit of orange, which we're starting to get bad on those, on those ones there and yellow, we're right, yellow's kind of in the middle, right? So yellow's not awful bad yet, but what, you know, we got to start looking at it. Okay. So here we have a little break that we wanted to see if there's any. Questions that we can answer or clarify or reiterate something for you. I don't know, Ken, if there's any, any questions in the chat right now?
Actually Tucker, there is, there's a couple that we answered in the chat and I got one up here from Councilman Sleek. Looks like he's inquiring, what he writes is, I'm hoping that we as a city looked at the heavily traveled streets. By our buses are strongly considered some of the first roads to replace. I'll let you go ahead and answer, I believe we're going to answer it later in the presentation. But maybe you can answer it a little bit, you know, really quickly, give us a quick synopsis of how these streets were chosen.
Sure, sure. Yep, yep. So kind of like I was mentioning earlier, you know, we went through and did a PCR reading of all the roads. But we also factored in how much traffic was on the road. So, so prioritizing what roads get worked on first. You know, the, the traffic on the road did play a big factor in that. So we've got some, some more explanation of that coming up. And then you will also see, once we get down to the slides where we're showing you what roads were improving as part of this road program. And there's this, there's some list of streets in there, you'll, you'll see that more definitively. But, but yes, you know, absolutely, you know, the, the amount of traffic on the roads is definitely a factor of how we prioritize. Okay, any, any other questions?
No, the only other questions are, I believe that I just answered in the chat, if everybody can see the chat room.
Yep, okay. All right. Very good. We'll keep moving on then. Again, we, I did put a slide in here, I did mention it in my opening statements, but you know, we're doing the best we can with what we know today. Just kind of just a disclosure saying, you know. You know, based on what happens in the future and over the next several years, you know, there could be some changes to the program, which like any, any other plan. You develop the best one you can and, and as you go, you gotta, you gotta make adjustments to it, to, to adapt to, to what's happening in the, in the current situation. So that's all this is. Okay. So. So, so here we start really getting into the details. And kind of trying to lay the framework for us with regards of where we're at. And if we continue on the path that we're currently taking versus, you know, trying to get, trying to get a more proactive approach going. So, you know, so if the city was only able to locally invest an average of $300,000 to $400,000 per year. Which is what we are projecting, you know, moving forward as far as availability of local funds. The average PCR ratings are projected to obviously significantly decrease. So I've got some maps that'll show us this exactly in a few slides here. But just, just a brief summary of it, you know, currently we're at 68.8. And over the next 20 years, it goes down to 64.6, 57.9, 54 and 50. So effectively in 20 years, only spending 300 to 400,000 a year. This is the trend that we're projecting that, you know, our road conditions are going to be in. So obviously not, not where we want to be pointing. So, you know, one, one thing to keep in mind is, you know, once you get down to a PCR reading of somewhere in the neighborhood of 50. That's when you really start to lose it. It's going to cost a whole lot more to get it repaired or maintained and potentially have to do a full reconstruct. So, you know, obviously that's very expensive to do. But that's, that's where we're kind of headed at the moment. Again, here's just another, another look at our, our current PCR map, just kind of refresh that again, you know, show you what it looks like today. Here's the PCR rating map with our current funding approach and funds that we'd be able to spend every year in five years. So, so we're spending 300 to 400,000 a year. So in the next five years, this is what the map is going to look like. This is what we're projecting. So obviously you can see a lot of the, a lot of the orange from the previous map has turned to red. Conditions are, you know, progressively decreasing and this, this year we've got an average of 64.6 PCR. Again, going, going downhill. The next five years, so 10 years from now. Again, further degrading, this is what the, this is what the map looks like. At that point, so we're at 57.9 here. Again, another five years, so 15 years from now, we're down to 54, lots of red, way too much red. You know, we, we got way too much red to deal with at this point. And 20 years from now, again, looking pretty bad. A lot of our, at this point, a lot of our roads that were green and, you know, light green and yellow. Because we haven't been able to touch them and maintain them over this time period have turned to orange and yellow. And some of them, you know, starting to get bad again. So again, that, that whole cycle, you know, repeats itself over time. So, you know, 20 years from now, we're not sitting good. Okay. So what's the, you know, what's the goal? For the city of Fremont and our roads, roads. So, you know, currently we're at 68.8. And what we've kind of settled in on as a, as a good average goal is a minimum of 75. So again, a 75 is not fabulous, but it's, it's pretty good. And once you get, get your average up to 75, it becomes much more easy to, to maintain. Versus, versus being in a position where they, they're really, you know, your average is really low. And you're just reactive and trying just to repair all the bad stuff first. So, so that's what our goal is for this program. Right, so. So if we're able to implement this real program. Over the next five years, the average PCR rating will increase from 68 to 75. So obviously we're, we're, we're going in the right direction. We're able to, you know, keep up with what's degrading and actually do some maintenance on roads and save them before they get to the point of getting bad on us. And, you know, this, this is, this is our proactive approach to, you know, to being responsible on getting our roads in a good condition. Now. We'll obviously evaluate after, after this first five years of the program, we would evaluate to make sure that we're achieving our goals. That we're, you know, pointed in the right direction. And I'm pretty confident we will. We've, we've crunched the numbers and looked at everything in detail and we feel pretty confident that way. But obviously we'll, we'll circle back around and evaluate even as we go. So. Okay, so here we take a look at what our PCR readings would be. With this additional funding and we're able to implement our program. So you can see after the first five years. A lot of, lot of green, quite a bit of yellow. You know, there's still some red, still some orange, that's why, you know, we still got work to do. But after, after the first five years, we're, we're setting a whole lot better than we were or would be on our current path. And so this is just a graph here that shows us, you know, where our projections are going. So, so the green line is effectively us being able to implement this real program. Over time, so you can see our average goes up and we're able to level off and then keep the roads maintained at a, at a good level moving forward. If we don't, and we just continue to spend 300 to 400,000 a year and, and hope we get a few grants here and there. You know, we can see the red line is that decrease in our, in our overall PCR reading as we, as we progress. Okay. Here's just kind of a, a graphic of, you know, what it looks like from a PCR reading standpoint. Of implementing a proactive maintenance program versus not, you know. In current, in, in continuing on our, on our current path here. So, so what you see on the green line is, you know, proactive maintenance going into a roadway. And it, you know, bumping up its PCR rating and, and then over time. You know, keeping it up at a, at a higher level and then actually, you know, spending less money overall as, as we go. Okay. Again, here's another little, little break for questions and answers. Ken, do we have anything that we can clarify?
Um, we did have one question in the chat room from, from John, I believe I'm looking for it now, from John. And I think we got it answered. And Jeff, if we didn't get it answered, feel free to, feel free to step in.
No, I was just asking, I was just asking as a devil's advocate, you know, your projections Tucker were based on 300 to 400,000 a year. What if we went ahead and applied for grants? You know, what, what would that do to the conditions of the roads that you've projected?
Right, right. So, and we are going to apply for any grant that we can get. We're going to, you know, we're doing that now and we are going to continue to do that. You know, obviously, you know, if we are to get, you know, another 100,000 or 200 or 300,000, you know, on grant monies to do a project. That has an impact on where we go. You know, but, you know, again, we're not, we're not able to count on that. You know, on an annual basis, you know, some programs are not reliable with regards to successfully awarding us dollars. You know, we've got OPWC that we apply for every year. Um are, are not reliable um with regards to uh successfully awarding us dollars. Uh you know, we've got OPWC that we apply for every year.
Right.
Um you know, I think on average, if every other year or. Or so, if we get, you know, monies to, to spend on our railways from those guys, uh we're doing good. Um you know, through ODOT, um you know, we apply for small cities, we apply for safety grants, we apply for other things. Um and there, again, you know, we've been lucky here um over the last five years and we've gotten a couple of grants from those guys. Uh but again, there's, there's no guarantee that we're, we're going to, but.
Right.
Uh but to answer your question, um you know, yes, uh that does move the needle if we are able to uh inject some. Uh grant dollars in there, uh but you know, our whole premise here is we're not really able to count on those.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tucker, could I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um so I, I agree with everything you said, but some of the other things that take into consideration when applying for these grants is um. Uh I guess for uh information to the public and also from the council members. Uh the grants can only be utilized for specific areas on certain projects. So. Uh for example, the Rossen Avenue project, um the city had to fund the other half of that project because the, the. The second half was not eligible to be funded um for the grant that we received. In fact. Um I don't know what the PCR reading was on that road before we did it, but in my opinion and on the complaints we received from the public. The uh, the side that was grant funded, um the other side, the other side of Rossen was actually in worse condition and we received more complaints on the other side. Which wasn't actually qualified for the grant. Um so with that being said, um although we still will continue to apply for grants, the other thing that the auditor brought to my attention is. Um these grants still require matching dollars. And uh if we're gonna continue to utilize the same amount of money spending. Um when we apply for the grants, then out of that, just estimating some of that, out of that four hundred thousand. Those are dollars that we're utilizing towards matching those grants, which then kinda restrict the areas. Of where we can complete those projects and um. A, a lot of the residential areas in the city may not qualify for some of the state and federal grants that, that we've applied for. So we're, we're a little restricted when we catch the grant. I kinda, I kinda describe it as we can go out fishing and catch this big well, but we gotta be prepared to eat it. And do we have the matching dollars to be able to fund it? You know, so that's kinda been part of the battle over the last four or five years on um. Uh when we applied for these grants, being very strategic on, okay, is, is this where we wanna put our matching dollars at? And, and we decided to do that. Just some facts to point out that Tucker stated, um we uh. We spent about four and a half million dollars in the last five years on our streets and approximately three point four million of, of those dollars did come from grants. So. Um as he stated, that's a significant amount of money coming from grants and obviously that's taken Rossen Avenue into consideration, which was uh. A fairly large grant funded project, you know, and um obviously we did uh Garrison Street and. Um we had to finance a lot of that project even with grants that we received, just because. Um that road did get to a, a, a red area on a PCR rating and um it took, that road took a, a complete reconstruct. So. Just one example that we've done since I've been in office. Thank you, that's all.
So, so Mr. Mayor, the, 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 the statement you're trying to make is. If we scored every grant we could possibly score, that still doesn't improve our roads to the state that you think they should be in.
It, well, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Um one, I guess the biggest concern would be we don't even, we can't even apply for the grant. Because we don't have the matching dollars to put towards the.
Okay.
Um uh even, I guess my thing is uh, if, even if we apply for every grant, the auditors told me. You know, um, you know, Mayor, we gotta be careful because we gotta make sure that we have the matching dollars towards these grants.
Okay.
So, so it's a, so your statement was, is true. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Tucker, do you agree with everything I said?
Absolutely agree. Um and, and then this might be a good point to bring up a, you know, to bring up a real life um example. Of exactly what you're talking about here. Um and that's uh, uh we're actually getting ready to apply for a small city grant. Uh for um North Fifth Street. Um that application is going in and, and a few weeks here. Um as part of that application. Um obviously, we, we're gonna have to come up with uh mashing dollars uh for the construction side of the work. And that's all that ODOT pays for is just the, the construction side. Um uh so we've got a, we've gotta be able to match uh the city's fair share. Of that component of the project, but the other component um is that we have to do a lot of upfront. Uh work to even get the project uh ready uh for construction. So. Uh we've gotta have it designed, we've gotta do, um uh we're currently uh doing a corridor study. Uh we've got, you know, geotechnical analysis we gotta do, we got environmental work we gotta do on a project to get as part of the funding program. So. There's a lot of other components to um some of these funding programs um that the city has to spend money on. Um even to get it to the stage of being ready for construction. Um and right now, we're, we're, we're trying to, we're struggling with this particular example to find the dollars that we need. Um to be able to get, get the design work done um and other things as part of the project, uh you know, to get it to that stage. So. Um so exactly to your, to your point, Mayor, um you know, you know, that's a, that's a real life example that we're dealing with. As we speak, uh to, to be able to try to, uh you know, get that project moving forward. So. Um that, that's, that's exactly, exactly correct. Okay, any, any other questions or? We've got Ken or?
Yeah, Tucker, so uh Councilman Reese. Asked the question, uh she says, I see that in twenty twenty six, my street Pennsylvania is still orange. I notice this more because this is my street. I live on North Pennsylvania in East State. Does. The school have any influence in the repairs of the street? It did take a lot of wear and tear during the construction of Krogen. I think it's, you probably answer that, Tucker.
Right, right, right. So uh, yep, so obviously Pennsylvania um is, is definitely. Uh one of the roads um uh that is, is in, is not in good shape. Um you know, in right now, uh you know, this, I, I brought, I went back to look at our, our. Projected two thousand twenty six with current funding. Um it stays orange on here, obviously. Um and then I'll scroll back through. Um and get to our map. With um. Uh, uh, let me, uh, I, I guess we've got a map um coming up here that'll show uh with. Our intended program. Um what, you know, what, obviously what roads get done and which, which ones are prioritized. Um and honestly, man, I can't remember off the top of my head if Pennsylvania is part of that. Uh we'll, we'll find out here in a few minutes when we, when we get there. Um uh but. You know, what, what I can say is, um you know, with what, with the programs laid out, again, we. We tried to use, you know, the PCR methodology and um. Uh use how much traffic around the roads to help prioritize, but uh, but again, you know, things are dynamic and. Uh we'll, we'll take a look at everything, but um, you know, that's, that's where we're at today. So I'll, I'll keep on any, any other ones um that I can answer now or should we roll on?
I don't have anything right now, so let's just move on.
Okay. Alright, so. Um we've kinda laid some framework for kinda where we're at, where we would like to go. Um and here's, here's how we're gonna, we're gonna get there. So what I'm gonna go through here in the next few slides is. Um our, our maintenance. Yeah, activities that, you know, we've got, we've got programmed out um for, you know, for helping us to. Either repair, maintain or reconstruct our, our roads. So uh first up here is um crack sealing. Um uh I think everybody kinda sees this uh when it gets done. Uh this is where. Uh we come through and, and um, you know, fill up the cracks with the uh asphaltic material. Um uh what it does is it prevents uh water from infiltrating into the road pavement section and, and base. Uh and tries to seal it off and protect it. Uh one of the, one of the worst enemies of any roadway is water. Um especially in the winter time where you get your um freeze and thaw cycles going. Uh heaves and cracks and breaks everything up. So uh by crack sealing um at, at good intervals, um it helps keep as much. Water out of the road section as possible. Okay, um another treatment method here is uh, is a micro surface. Um most everybody's probably familiar with uh a milling fill. Um yeah, that's essentially where you grind up a, a layer of asphalt and put it back down. This is a little bit different than that. Um it's a, it's a thin layer um that doesn't uh, uh doesn't cost as much as a milling fill operation. Um but what, what it does do is again, it seals the road out uh from water penetrating it. Um helps out smooth, smoothing things a bit. Uh doesn't, it doesn't correct any uh profile. Or uh base issues. Um so if you've got, you know, if you've got some, some bad rutting and if you got. Uh a lot of potholes and those type of things, it won't correct those. Uh but it does, uh you know, does uh help out. Uh seal the road off, give it a little smoother ride. Um and then again, it's a great pre- preventative maintenance. Um tool that uh, that prolongs the life of the road. Um next here is a, a cape seal. Um this is essentially a combination of a chip seal and a micro surface. Um so in this treatment method, um uh everybody's probably seen a chip seal before. Uh it's where, and you see it mostly on rural roads, um county roads where you put some asphalt down. There's some liquid down, you, you top it off with some uh aggregate, uh they roll it in and, and that's it. Uh this takes it another step further than that, uh which is a more appropriate application for. Um you know, for urban settings, which we are. Um is you basically do a chip seal and then you come back with a micro surface on top of that. So it's not quite uh quite a milling fill, a little less section, a little, little cheaper to do than uh than the milling fill. Uh but it's an effective method to, to, you know, make corrections on a road that's in pretty decent shape, but uh we don't want it to get any worse than what it is. Um next is the milling fill, which is uh our, our standard treatment option. It seems like uh most roads that we, uh that we work on. Um or, or, or this particular repair, uh which is essentially just uh removing. The top layer or maybe two um of an asphalt road section and then replacing it with a new. Uh layer or two. So um and here we correct um all kinds of issues. Um. You, you're able to adjust centerline profile a little bit, get better drainage, um and makes the road a whole lot better. So. Uh pretty common and that's what we do most of the time. Uh the next treatment method here that we're looking at on uh, on some roads um is a reclamation. Uh so here, what we do is essentially um grind up the existing asphalt. Uh put it, place it right back in and then pave over it. Uh so it's a, a little greener solution to um just removing. Um and it, it's, it's a, it's a cheaper option to actually a full depth reconstruction. Um and it does correct, uh you typically, once you get to this point, you've gotta do some base repairs, the stone aggregate. Um and then do this particular method. Um but it, it, you know, uh again, it's a, a great tool. Uh for, for the right situation. So um the wrong situation in the city of Fremont is if you have a brick. Uh composite section, which we've got a lot of. Um so uh, so this particular method uh wouldn't work. Um on a lot of our roads, but there's some um that, that it will uh be a great option for. Um and you'll see that uh coming up. We've got a few slides that uh that show uh what roads we're gonna work on and, and what repair methods we're proposing. And this is one of them. And then obviously, once a road gets to the point of no return, like we, like we had on Garrison Street. Um we uh, we needed to do a full depth remove and replace. So uh obviously, this is the most expensive option. Uh full depth replacement. Um obviously, with this particular project, we uh also replaced all of the infrastructure. So water lines, sewer lines, sanitary lines. Um so big, big, big project, uh lots of money. Um and uh this, this is where we don't wanna go if we can help, uh help it. Um some roads are gonna, gonna have to need this, um and that's part of our program. Um but if we get, you know, get proactive here and get on the right path, we'll, we'll be able to do less and less of this moving forward. So there's that. Um here's a. Uh this, this like, uh an example of uh, of a road that we're looking at. Um and comparing it between a proactive and a reactive maintenance approach. So this is a section of Oak Harbor Road from uh, from Cedar Street to State. Uh it's about two point three seven lane miles or almost a half a mile centerline. Um so the, the condition currently in, in, in any way that's driven it. Has been out there is, is just starting to get pretty bad. We're getting to the point of putting no return. So if we don't do something with it very quickly here, um you know, we're gonna be in bad shape. Uh so. Construction can be uh postponed significantly, reconstruction can be postponed significantly. If we are able to do some preventative maintenance activities on it now. Um unfortunately, where we're at with Oak Harbor in this section is that. The, the maintenance method to repair it is a milling fill. So that's, that's what we gotta start out with. Um that's, you know, that's, that's the first stepping stone. Um so on a proactive approach, we would do that next year. Um about four years later, so we come back and do a crack seal because about that time, you're gonna start to develop some cracks in the road. And then uh, you know, a while after that, after it degrades some, uh we would look at maybe doing a micro surface. And then uh about twenty five years from now or so, we'd be looking at doing another milling fill. So, you know, over that timeframe. Um with more of a proactive approach, uh we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of about one point four million dollars to. Uh to repair that, that section of road. Now, if we go a more reactive approach, which is, okay, we're not gonna do anything to it. Um for the next five years and we're, we're projecting it in the next five years, we're gonna have failure. Um it's gonna get really bad and it's gonna get to the point where we're gonna have to really look at doing a reconstruct. So a four reconstruct. Um two thousand twenty six of about one point two five million. Um and then, and again, you know, we projected out another twenty years from there to do, you know, we'll have to do another, another milling fill. So about one point nine five million. So over those, you know, generally same timeframe, um to keep that road uh maintained and, and good operation. Um we're looking at a difference of about five hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. So I mean, that's, you know, to me, this is a, a great example of um if we're able to. Proactively maintain um a road versus just letting it go to failure and replacing it. Um on how much money we can save um just, just on this half a mile section of road. So. Um you know, so imagine uh, you know, what that would translate to, um you know, citywide. Um you know, we, we've got, obviously, we got a lot of roads, a lot of, a lot of work to do. Um we can't save them all at once. Um but if we can, you know, get started on the right path and, and do this, um you know. You know, the projection is we'll save the, the city a lot of money in the long haul. So that's a, that's an example there. Of what that means. Alright, so. What, what we're gonna talk about here now is um, you know, uh what we're proposing to do in this road program. Um and what we tried to do here and, and hopefully this is a, a benefit for. Are you council members and, and various wards um that uh, that you're serving? Um you know, gives you an idea of, of what uh the program's gonna look like over the next five years. Um so we're gonna start out with Ward One here, uh which is the area in pink. And if you look at the legend to the right, um you'll see what our, our repair methods are. So at the top, we got full depth reconstruction, um which is a dashed blue line. Uh below that, we've got a kind of a purple pink dashed line. That's a, that's milling fill. Um the yellow line is a micro surface and the blue line dash line is a, is a cape seal. So those are the various. Methods or techniques that we would apply. Um and then below those uh in each category is the particular roads that we, we would be working on. So. Um I'm not gonna go through each individual road for each ward, for each type of repair method, but that gives you an idea. Uh for reference on, on what we're thinking um uh for this first five years. So there's uh Ward One. Um here's uh, here's Row, uh I'm sorry, Ward Two, um and what we're proposing to do. Um as you can see, we do have a, a big chunk of uh West State Street. As you can see, we do have a, a big chunk of West State Street in here. We've got Oak Harbor Road in here. You know, so we've got a couple of our thoroughfares that, you know, that we definitely, that definitely need a bunch of attention. You know, in this first stage of the, of this program. Obviously from, you know, from our corp line, from Christie all the way to Oak Harbor. You know, we were fortunate enough to, to get some grant monies from ODOT to resurface that section a couple of years ago, which is in great shape. We want to make, we want to make the rest of State Street look just like that. Okay. Here's Ward three, which is the shaded green color. Again, our various repair methods. And our roads that we were, you know, looking at touching for the first five years. And Angie, I'm, I'm sorry to tell you, but we don't have Pennsylvania. On this particular map here for the first five years. Now, it, it is, it is in our, you know, progressive plan. To get that one, but I, I didn't think it was in the first five years and, and looking at this map, I, I remember that now. But. Here we, here we are for Ward three. And Ward four is shown here in the, in kind of the light blue. And we can see most of the program and Ward, Ward four is a little different than the rest. We've got mostly just mill and fill. We've got some pieces and parts of full depth reconstruction, a little bit of micro surfacing. But what you can see in Ward four that based on, based on its PCR readings now and what we're projecting. This is the, this is what we're planning on doing to, to get us up to par here. Okay, so he, here's a couple pie charts of. The dollars that we would be spending as part of this program in the various wards. That's the, the pie chart on the left. What, what I want to mention or note to everybody here is, you can see that, you know, we would be spending a significant amount of money. For this program and we're, 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 you know, spending a significant amount of money in, in each of the wards. So, you know, so that, that's the, that's the overall plan right now. The next pie chart to the right, basically just shows where we're at today with the average PCR reading of each ward. Okay. So. You know, so that, that kind of outlines, you know, what we're proposing to do for the, this first five years, this part of this program. Obviously, there's, there's many benefits to, to, to keeping our roads in good condition and well maintained. Obviously, from a community standpoint, peeling the residents, businesses, industry. You know, that's, that's an important function or appearance. You know, improve functionality. So, you know, better drainage, you know, safer travel. You know, those are, you know, those are important features to have in our, in our system and, and strive to, to improve on. And then just a little, just a little tidbit for everybody here. There's a study that was done in 2012, basically saying. That if you are able to keep a, you know, a good road system, you'll save approximately. You know, a hundred bucks a year on road maintenance. So there, you know, so there's some direct benefit to each individual that's, you know, that uses our roads regularly. By, you know, hopefully reduced maintenance costs on their vehicles. Okay. So we've got another, another spot here for some, for a break and some questions and answers. Is there anything that we can, we can help explain here a little better?
I would think that the, the only thing that we had Tucker was a, a Councilman Smith. Asked a question, do you have, do you know the timeline for when each, or we start each street, which we do have a plan for that. I don't think it was included in a slide and, and there's no way I can remember all the names of the streets offhand. But yes, we do have a, a plan in place for that. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that at all.
Sure, sure. Yes. So, so absolutely, we do have, you know, a, a, a plan and a spreadsheet set up for. You know, obviously the first year, second year, third year, fourth and fifth year. So we've got those, you know, broken down into, onto years. I don't have those in this presentation, but be more than happy to. You know, share that with you or anybody else that would like to look a little more in detail of, of what the program entails and, and timing. So, you know, absolutely, you know, get ahold of me or, you know, shoot me an email or whatever and I can, I can share that information with you.
And if I could jump in real quick and piggyback off of Tucker's answers, we do plan on. Posting the recording that we're doing tonight on YouTube. And the PowerPoint presentation, I think we're going to try to convert to a downloadable PDF. Which will be on the city's website. And then along with that, we can, we can also upload onto the city's website. A PDF of the roads programmed by year, so it would be available to, to the public. So, so that's, that's all planned that we're, we're hoping to do real soon to get that information out and available to the public.
Yep, yep, absolutely. We can, we can definitely do that. Okay, any, any other questions or anything we can explain, provide? Anybody want to take a, a relook at a map? Or anything we can elaborate on?
Tucker, Councilman Sleek again for Ward two. Just one of the main heavy routes is at Dickinson, of course, with. All the new projects and everything going on. And I was, is that part of it? Because I'm, I'm not seeing that part of doing the research, resurface.
Right. Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a great, great question and, and a very, a very good catch. Because as, as you know, and, and I know with Kroger's going in. You know, there's a lot more traffic on Dickinson being routed that way. Obviously with the schools, that happening and other things going on. So the reason why you're not seeing it is because we're working on it this year. Yeah, we, we're actually able to secure some OPWC dollars. And one of the projects that we're doing with that is, is Dickinson. So from West State up to, actually up to North, North Street is where we're going to resurface to.
That's up to Cedar.
I was hoping, I was hoping Cedar.
Yeah, we, we go all the way up to Cedar.
Kevin, thank you and Tucker, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any, any other questions? Okay, if we don't have any other questions at this point. You know, like, like Paul mentioned just a bit ago here, we are going to post this presentation on our website. If anybody has any, you know, any questions for, for me or for my office, you know, obviously feel free to reach out to us. I'm more than happy to, to, to help, you know, explain anything further. But at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn, turn the presentation over to our city auditor, Paul Graw. He's going to talk a little bit more about, you know, the financials for the, our proposed program and, and get into some of those details. So, so take her over, Paul.
Okay, thank you Tucker. So yeah, on this next slide here. And, and as we talked about on the previous slide with the pie graph. This five-year program with all the streets and the different remediation and, and, and construction methods that we're looking at. It's probably going to be ended up in the neighborhood of like a 12 to 14 million dollar program. And so what I'm going to go through is kind of go into a little bit more detail on how we got to the local. Amount that we've been currently able to commit to the, to the road programs that we've been doing so far. And, and where we need to go from here. So this slide here talks about our general fund revenues. That come from intergovernmental revenues, primarily from the state of Ohio. And so you can see a bit of a pie graph there where the dark navy blue at the bottom. Is our local government funding, which is a shared revenue source from the state to all municipalities and townships. Throughout the entire state. And the kind of the rose pink color there on top of the navy blue is the inheritance tax or the estate tax. There's a separate table where I broke those two amounts out specifically. And you can see from. Thank you. So I broke out that second, that second chart there down at the bottom to specifically hone in on the local government funding. And the inheritance or estate tax. So everyone can see from 1995 to 2010, I, I looked at every fifth year and we averaged. Excuse me, we averaged just about $980,000 a year from just those two revenue sources from the state of Ohio. And then in 2011, the state legislature approved a 50% reduction in the local government funding. And then in 2013, the inheritance tax or the estate tax was repealed. So you can see in 2015 and 20, the average amount of intergovernmental revenue from those two sources that we got from the state. Drop down to about 300, excuse me. Drop down to about 380, $400,000. So that resulted in just about a $580,000 decrease every year to our general fund. So that amount significantly impacted our ability to do a lot of different things. On the revenue side of things, not in the general fund. A lot of people are probably going to focus on the gas tax that was talked about last year. The state legislature did approve an increase to our gas tax, which was, which is earmarked to be used for road improvements. Unfortunately, where we're at right now, it's a little bit difficult to tell what the local impact is going to be. That approved increase was effective July 1st of last year. And with all the coronavirus and COVID issues and the restricted travel and people scaling back their travel. If you don't travel, you're not spending as much on gas, so we're not collecting as much gas tax. I can say that we were, we were estimated by the state to receive about $915,000. With that increase, which was about a $200,000 increase from what we had been receiving in gas tax. Last year, we only got about 850,000 of that, but obviously that's primarily due to. The COVID issue, working our way through that. Right now, currently, a majority of the gas tax dollars are used to fund our street maintenance department. So the entire department with our crews and their equipment and the snowplow equipment. And the local crack sealing equipment and the crack sealing material that we do currently. The road salt and street striping and a lot of the current maintenance that we do do. Separate from road reconstruction is already paid with a majority of that gas tax money. But the increase we were anticipating on using a lot of that increased dollars. To go into more, helping out the road program, the current road program as much as we could. We're just waiting to see how much that impact's going to be. It probably is going to end up being about 200, $250,000 a year, which is. Not necessarily a small amount of money, but as Tucker articulated through all the different roads and all the different. Maintenance and, and, and reconstruction methods that we're looking at and the roads that we need to tackle. In the next five years that we're trying to do, being in that 12 to 14 million dollar total program cost. $250,000 a year is, is not going to help us get everything that we feel we need to get done, done. So I just want the public to know that we're aware, obviously of the gas tax increase. And we're, we're obviously planning on using a portion of that for road program improvements. But the scope that we feel we need to address and the aggression that we want to. Get out and, and attack a lot of our roads, like Tucker said, state streets included in there. That's a massive road with a lot of lanes. That's not a small project. Oak Harbor Road that we had the specific example is a significant project. North Fifth Street that we talked about is a significant project. Krogan Street, Hayes Avenue, there's a lot of major, major thoroughways that are going to be significant. Costs involved, no matter the treatment or reconstruction method. So that's all I wanted to touch upon, on the general fund revenues. So if Tucker can click to the next slide for me. And this is where we are going to be looking at our income tax transfers. So this is the primary source of our local dollars that we were referencing earlier in the presentation. And so you can see kind of that, again, that pinkish salmon color on top of the navy blue. The navy blue transfer is the amount that comes out of our income tax fund into our general fund. And that salmon pink color is what we've historically contributed to our capital improvement fund, primarily for road program. So you can see over that same timeframe that I referenced earlier, 95, 2000, 2005. And then it started to tail down in 2010, but we averaged probably just over a million dollars a year. In transfers for capital improvements, primarily the road program. But then, when those intergovernmental revenues were reduced by the state. We had to fill that gap with local dollars in our general fund to try and keep maintaining those services. And the, and keeping those departments operating. And so when there's only so much to go around. In this case, the capital budget is, is what kind of took the hit. And so you can see in the years that we pulled to illustrate here in 2015 and in 2020. We ended up transferring an average of about $380,000 a year to the capital fund for roadway improvements. Some of that obviously was matching dollars like we referenced earlier and was able to get matched up with some grants. But as we've said, those aren't always guaranteed, not, definitely not every year, something that we're able to, to kind of get ahold of and be awarded. And so it becomes difficult to stay on top of our road maintenance. With that, that, that contribution to the capital road improvement program. Of that three to four, three to $500,000 a year. So that difference was about $660,000 of what we used to contribute to the capital improvement fund. Versus what we're able to now. And when you compare it to the difference in what was taken away from us by the state. That was about $580,000. So very comparable to see that correlation. Between the decrease in the reductions and the elimination from the state in our revenues that we received locally. To what we were eventually able to afford to kind of contribute to that capital campaign. Let's see. Oh, and another thing to keep in mind that we, we did reference a little bit earlier is. As those resources that we have locally available for the road improvement program has eroded. Because we've needed to keep our, our level of service in the operations of the other departments up. The maintenance, not the maintenance cost, but the material cost and the construction cost has obviously increased. We've seen it at a hyper level over the last six to 12 months through the pandemic. But that trend over the last couple decades has obviously been up. And, and so being able to keep pace with those construction costs becomes more and more challenging. So when we've got a program that we're looking to try and accomplish at this level and this scope. And our limited resources to do that. We're looking at what is some options that we can come to council with and come to the public with. So on our next slide here, Tucker. You can see, we're going to end up here talking about a levy. We're looking at proposing to city council and the voters. A half percent income tax levy increase. This would be a temporary levy that would be effective January 1st, 2022 for five years. That is very much on purpose. As well as a couple bullet points down there, it would be restricted. The use of these funds would be restricted for only roadway improvements. The, the administrative team here at the city involving the mayor, myself, the safety service director. And then with the engineer's office, working on the road program specifically. We really wanted to ask the voters for a five-year levy. we really wanted to ask the voters for a five-year levy so that we can have the opportunity to earn the trust of the voters that the city will accomplish the goals set forth in this road program proposed by the city engineer. Um, the other major point that we wanted to, wanted to do was, um, that we focused on was restricting the use of these income tax dollars. We wanted the public to know that the city can't use these funds for anything else in the city but roadway improvements. We can't use them for something at the water treatment plant. We can't use them for something at the, um, in, in the rec center or in the parks or to hire personnel, um, because the ballot language of the levy is going to include the restriction of what the, what the, um, what the increased income tax dollars can be used for. Um, so, um, and sorry, just to jump on it real quick because I saw Brent, um, he asked, so this is not a property tax levy. And no, this would not be a property tax levy. Um, we're not looking to do anything with the property taxes. Um, we're looking to do something with the income taxes, um, and one of the reasons why, a couple of the reasons why was, um, the last increase to the income tax, um, levy within the city was done all the way back in nineteen eighty-eight when we went from one percent to one and a half percent. Um, so this would take us up to a two percent total income tax um, rate for the city. Um, and that lines up actually with what a lot of similar communities um, have been doing such as Bellevue, Fosteria and Tiffin, who have asked their voters to pass similar levies, um, in their communities primarily because they're dealing with the same issue with the, uh, cuts by the state. It just really has, has hamstrung city administrations to really keep the level of service and operations and, um, up to where we've, we've, we've grown accustomed to having them while also staying on top of the capital improvement needs um, that, uh, that we know are, are needed. We can see it when we're driving around town. Um, the city engineer Tucker Frederickson articulated, um, that very well earlier in the presentation. So that final bullet point here, the city administration, we plan on bringing legislation, um, before city council next week. That's Thursday, June third. Um, and so that will have the more specific ballot language in it. Um, there also, there's an ordinance and a resolution that will be before council. And, um, and that will go for the full three readings. Um, so we're encouraging everybody to come to those meetings and, um, and, uh, and reach out before, during, after those meetings to, uh, answer question, ask questions. Get those questions answered because we want to get as much information as we can about this need and about how these dollars can be used and how they're restricted and how important that is. Um, so, uh, um, so that's what the conversation is going to be over the next month and a half or so. Um, so Tucker, you can go to the next slide for me, please. And here we tried to articulate in, in relatively simple terms, what something like this might be. Um, the average household income in the city of Fremont is approximately forty-seven thousand dollars. So a household with that, uh, that income coming in would be about an additional four dollars and fifty-two cents a week or about sixty-five cents per day. Um, we also added this table to kind of, uh, be a little bit of an aid for people to maybe quickly kind of see where maybe you might line up as an individual or as a household. Um, so we've got the annual income of what you might make, like I said, as an individual or as a household. And then what this additional income tax, um, that would go specifically to the road program, what your contribution would, uh, would look like. Um, so you can see there, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars a year income would be about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year of a, of an increased income tax, which is about two dollars and forty cents a week. Um, go down a couple thresholds there. If you as an individual or a household makes seventy-five thousand dollars a year, um, then that would be about a three hundred and twenty-five dollar contribution, um, a year to this road program or about six dollars and twenty-five cents per week. Um, we want everyone to know that everybody involved in the city in this road program um, fully appreciates what this levy and how this levy might impact every household in here in Fremont. Um, we're very aware of that. We're very appreciative of, of, um, of every dollar that everybody, um, deals with in their own house. I know I do. I know, I know everybody does. Um, but like I said, we truly feel that these improvements are so important to keep the momentum that the entire community has been building over the last several years. A lot of the improvements downtown, a lot of improvements on, on roads that we mentioned earlier, um, with Garrison and the beautiful entranceway that we're going to have by the end of the year with, uh, with Rossin and, uh, the bookends of, of East State Street, West State Street, um, that, that have been upgraded. We want to keep that momentum going for our citizens, possible new residents, possible new businesses, our current businesses, um, truck traffic coming in and out on Fifth Street, for example. We want to make sure that we've got a, uh, a, a beautiful city and working on making it even, uh, even more aesthetically pleasing and, and, uh, and safer and, and better for everybody to drive on. So with those cuts that I described earlier, we just don't have the local resources to keep up with the improvements that our streets desperately need, um, that they're in need of now and, uh, and, and going forward. Um, so, um, you can go ahead and, and go to the next slide there, Tucker. And so here, I just wanted to reiterate the restriction on these funds, um, that they would only be used for roadway infrastructure improvements. Um, like I said earlier, we're looking for a temporary increase, a temporary levy to try and earn that trust of the taxpayers, um, that, that we're laying out a plan and give us five years and we'll report back during the program and, and after the program is complete. And, um, and to show everybody what, uh, what we've been able to accomplish. And, and we're really hoping that that, that need and that want to earn the trust along with the restriction that the public will feel that, that those dollars are, are going to be used solely for that purpose. They're going to be able to see, um, that, uh, those, those dollars being used because they're going to see the roads get improved, whether it's front, in front of their house, driving to work, driving to school, visitors coming in from out of town. Um, and, and they're going to see it being used on our roadways, which is a huge, huge need in the city. Um, and like we said earlier, and I'll just reiterate it as well, that the city will continue to aggressively apply for grant funding um, to bolster the planned program that, uh, that Tucker and Kevin have worked on, um, worked so hard on. And I think that these levy dollars could actually increase the city's ability to be awarded some of those grants because we would have more local match dollars that Tucker was referencing earlier that we can leverage when we're applying, when we, when we can say we can pay for the design work and we can pay a higher percentage of the construction work. We can score a little bit better on that application and get even more grant dollars coming back into our community is, is our goal. We're, we're definitely not going to slow down or, uh, or take our foot off the gas on, on what we're applying for. Um, but unfortunately, right now, um, as, as Mayor Sanchez said, we are kind of taking our foot off the gas on applying for some of these grants because I've got to tell them when, when we can only locally pay three, four hundred, maybe five hundred thousand dollars in a match for a significant road improvement, like what we talked about on a state street or an O'Carver Road, we, we don't get as much match as what we really, really need and want when we, uh, when we apply for those grants. Um, so like we said before, grants are, are never a guarantee, um, but I think this levy can help us and, um, increase our chances and, and then hopefully at the end of the five-year period, that list of roads that we talked about earlier and, and the ward maps that we went over, we can say not only did we do those streets, but we were able to do a handful or a dozen more because we were able to kind of get some more grant dollars coming, uh, coming back into our community along with this. Um, so with that, uh, Tucker can roll it and, um, and that's going to be some questions and answers. So Ken, if there's anything else that was asked, um, while I was speaking, or if anybody would like to chat something now, um, feel, obviously feel free.
There was a couple of questions on the chat room. Uh, I think you touched on, uh, from John said, and can Paul, as the auditor, separate levy expenses from city budget to show that the city is following through with their promise? And then there was another one that he also asked, says, uh, we all share in using these city streets less support to keep up, uh, keep up of them.
Okay, so I will, I, let me, let me, I would like to address, um, um, Councilman Elder's, uh, comment or, or question on the, the, um, separation. So we have a number of funds in the city budget. Um, you can go out on the finance page of the city's website and you can see, um, I've got a number of monthly reports that I present to council and you can see all the different funds. And those funds help us restrict that only those, um, dollars that are in that fund are used for a specific purpose. So the best example is our water fund. So the water bills that we pay can only be used to fund the water office, the water treatment plant, the water line, infrastructure around town. And so those expenses come out of that water fund because those revenues go into that water fund. This would be the exact same way. Um, we would have a separate capital fund where these dollars would get deposited. And then all these projects that we're looking to accomplish would all get expensed out of those project, or I mean, out of that fund. Um, so they wouldn't be commingled. Um, so, um, it might be commingled in that how I referenced earlier. Maybe we might utilize some gas tax dollars or some motor vehicle license fee dollars in addition to these levy dollars to kind of, uh, pay for a contract. But you'll be able to see all these dollars going into that fund and what they're going out for. Um, and so they would be completely restricted and, and in a completely separate fund from our general fund, from our general street maintenance fund. Um, so yes, they would be, they would be completely separate and, uh, and completely earmarked for the purpose that the, uh, voters are, um, are approving the ballot language for.
Good. Thank you, Paul.
Yep. Any other, uh, finance related questions or was that the last one that we hadn't addressed so far?
It was like, how about my end?
Yeah, as I was, I was scrolling back through, I think that's all. And like Tucker said, um, I'm obviously available as well. My number is on the city website. If anybody wanted to ask more, um, specific questions about the levy or about current, um, resources um, or historical resources of what we've had in the past, um, feel free to reach out and, um, and give me a call, my office a call. And, um, track season's over for me unfortunately, so I'm, I'm always in the office. I'm not leaving early for a track meet like, uh, Councilman Elder is, uh, is still. So congratulations to them. And, uh, that's all I have. If there's no more questions that pop up, then I will, uh, turn it over to Mayor Sanchez to, uh, conclude.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Auditor Graw. Are there any other questions, uh, Safety Service Director?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, first and foremost, um, I just, I just have to say thank you to, uh, Ken Frost and Tucker Frederickson, City Engineer who's on tonight, obviously, and, and our, our city auditor and, um, and also our Assistant Engineer and our Street Department Director, Bill Goon. Um, this task has been a very, very lengthy task. Um, it's taking a significant amount of time. Um, just like we are here tonight, um, putting this presentation on at, uh, seven thirty to the public. These folks have worked countless hours, um, after business hours to, uh, to put this plan together. Um, I, I, as the mayor of Fremont, am, am very, very proud of, of this plan. Um, I, I will say that when we first started having discussions after Mr. Frederickson, uh, in the engineer's office and Mr. Frost presented to me, uh, what we were looking at, I was a little nervous, a little nervous to come on to the public. Um, a little nervous to, uh, to move forward with, uh, with the, with the street levy. Um, however, tonight I'm, uh, very excited. Uh, as we know that this is, is very much needed, as Councilman Elder stated, these are roads that we all drive on. Um, I feel as the mayor of the city for the last five to just almost six years that, um, that under my leadership in the city, I've, I've proven to the public that we will be a train, a very transparent, um, local government. Uh, we will work together with all of our local leaders and utilize every resource that we can from the state and federal level to apply for grants. Um, and I, and I believe that if you look at the numbers, we've done that. In fact, uh, Mr. Frederickson and, and I have joked on, Mr. Mayor, what are you doing to me here with, with all of these grants and projects and everything that we're doing? And, uh, uh, my point is, if you ask any of these folks to justify their job to the public and what they do, uh, it's, it's very easy to do. And, and they're obviously all great examples of, of public servants and everything that you all do. So as much as I'd like to take credit for the entire program, the credit is to the team and to everyone in our administration that has worked tirelessly to, uh, to put this together. Um, similar to our economic development plan, I think it's important to have a comprehensive plan for the city. We need to think about the future of our, of our kids and our, and our grandkids and make sure that we put them in, uh, in the best situation that we can in the future with economic development in our schools and downtown and everything else that we've done. Um, just to point out, uh, we, we've worked very hard to, uh, to try to minimize the cost to the residents on, on, on many cities. Um, services that we provide, we have not raised water or sewer rates one time in the last, uh, six years since we've been in office. And, um, you know, I'm proud to say that as when I first came in office nearly six years ago, um, I stated publicly that water rates would be, sewer rates could, would be increased regardless of who won the election at that time. And, um, as Mr. Frost came in and, and we looked into this and, and Mr. Graw, myself and everyone, I, and, 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 uh, city council, um, we were able to put some things in place that haven't, um, that prevented us from having to raise water rates. We still don't have any plans to raise water sewer rates at this time. Um, however, we think that this is the best plan that we could come up with, which is why it took such a long time. And, uh, I know that, uh, myself and, and everyone here, we're very excited to, uh, to start taking on public meetings as we move forward and doing our best to, uh, answer every question um, to the public that we can, whether that's, uh, social media, uh, whether that's taking a phone call to our office or taking an email. There might not be one answer that, um, that we all have amongst this team. I feel confident that we will get an answer for uh, whatever the question may be between, between all of us. And, and again, everyone here was very vital to making this happen. And without collaboration and working together, um, there is no way that we would be here tonight putting this presentation on. So again, thank you all so much.
Do we have any other questions before we adjourn this meeting? If none, then I would adjourn this, uh, presentation and meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Great job.